Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 3 organizational meeting of the Quincy City Council. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to recognize our elected officials who are joining us here this evening. Of course, we have with us our esteemed Mayor, Mayor Tom Coke. We also have with us Senator John Keenan, Norfolk County Sheriff Pat McDermott, and Mrs. Margaret LaForest, former city councillor. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to ask you all to please rise for the presentation of the colors. We'll have the salute of the flag brought to us by the Quincy Girl Scouts. For the posting of the color this evening, we have North Quincy High School ROTC Color Guard.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let, O, A. I, A. O, O.
Thank you very much. You may now be seated. I'd like to also recognize that we have with us tonight our school community member, Frank Santoro. Thank you for joining us. For our invocation, I'd like to call up Father Martin this evening. Father Martin?
It is an honor to be here tonight for the swearing in of our elected officials. As we turn to God to seek His help and blessing upon these servants, let us ponder some words of wisdom from our founding father, John Adams, a great leader in the American Revolutionary War, our first vice president and second president, and our local hero, who wisely said, "Government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people, and not for profit, honor, or private interest." Elsewhere, he said, "The Declaration of Independence laid the cornerstone of human government upon the first precepts of Christianity." And he warned us, "Our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to government of any other, and those who trade liberty for security have neither." Our founding fathers knew well that religious principles are what hold together a nation and a government. It is also true of a city, a community, and a family. It is our prayer this night that Almighty God will continue to bless our city with faithful servants who always seek to follow those religious principles, held dear and essential to our founding fathers, and to strive to serve God and country by serving this community of Quincy with the help of the Lord, whose grace and mercy we invoke tonight for them, and for all who are entrusted to govern in any capacity in this great nation. Amen.
Thank you, Father Martin. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role of the councillors elect?
Councillor Andronico.
President.
Councillor Kane.
President.
Councillor DeBona.
President.
Councillor Harris.
Councillor Mahoney.
Councillor McCarthy.
President.
Councillor Palmucci.
Councillor Phelan.
President Liang.
Present.
Five members.
Thank you. I'd like to just also note that councillors Palmucci and Harris were present earlier today and got sworn in, and we also have Councillor Mahoney and Councillor Phelan logging in through Zoom as you can see here. Madam Clerk, could you please stand to administer the oath of office?
Thank you. I'd ask the council to please stand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Quincy City Council.
As a member of the Quincy City Council.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the City of Quincy.
And the ordinances of the City of Quincy.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations, councillors.
So when I was sworn in as City Council President back in January 2020, nobody could have predicted what the next two years would have looked like. Our city was brimming with potential, and I was excited to help us tap into that energy. Of course, just three months later, the pandemic upended all of those plans. Things we thought we were going to work on got pushed back to the back burner, while we all had to prioritize figuring out how to protect ourselves, our families, and our city. My colleagues and I had to manage multiple tasks at once. We had to quickly figure out exactly what we were dealing with. We had to make plans for how we, as a city council, would respond and how to quickly adapt. We had to take care of our own families and loved ones while also working to keep residents of Quincy safe. And through all of this, we had to focus on our most important job, to lead this city through one of its greatest challenges, without losing sight of the strengths that make our city and her people so great. Even before COVID, though, we knew there were challenges facing us. Our public discourse was already divided, and we knew that Quincy needed to find a way to come together to celebrate our differences instead of letting them push us apart. The very things that made our city such a success were also stretching us and forcing us to grow in ways that might have been uncomfortable. But in the end, we knew that we would come out of it stronger, more resilient, and better prepared for whatever the future holds. Through all of this, the political climate, the challenges of a global pandemic, and the growing pains of a thriving city, we have managed to survive. More than that, I would say that Quincy has continued to progress as a place for families, for small businesses, and for community. We've all had difficult conversations around issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion, around the role of development across the city, around the priorities that would shape Quincy. These conversations weren't easy, but we would have them because at our core, we know that we all want what's best for our city. At the end of the day, we kept our heads down and did the things that we needed to do to get through each day. Your city never stopped working for you. Things might have worked differently at times, but we continued to do what needed to be done. The trash kept getting collected, streets kept getting plowed, and the lights stayed on. Our plans for the future might have had to adapt, but the core of who we are as a city and as a government did not. And we stayed strong because we continued to listen, to collaborate, to put ourselves in each other's shoes. There was no roadmap for any of this, but that didn't mean that the work could stop. In response to this, my colleagues on the city council didn't skip a beat, and we worked hard as a group to make sure that each person in Quincy had access to the kinds of resources and support that they needed to get through this time. We didn't always agree on things, but I believe that is why we're able to get through this together. Our differences mean that we each bring valuable perspectives to the table, and it's the diversity of our perspectives that lead to creative and effective solutions. As trying as the last two years have been, I'm humbled to have been given the opportunity to serve them as your city council president. Because of this time, I have seen the strength of the leaders in our community when they come back to help others. I've seen the power that comes from residents when they step up to support one another. I have grown more than I could have ever imagined, and I have seen my colleagues grow just as much. I am proud to have served alongside them as their council president, and I look forward to continuing our work together under the leadership of our new president. And so to my colleagues, to the people of Quincy, to my amazing family and friends, thank you for making the last two years a time that I am proud to look back on. I am proud of every single one of us and what we've all accomplished together. It's been an honor to serve a city as resilient as Quincy. I'd now like to call for the nomination and election of the city council president. I'm going to go ahead and accept nominations for the city council president for the 2022 to the 2023 session. I'm going to go ahead and recognize Ward Two City Councillor Anthony Andronico.
President Liang. First, I'd just like to say what a privilege it is to have the opportunity to continue to serve the people of Ward Two and work collaboratively with all of you to make Quincy an even better place to call home. We'll continue to face many challenges over the next two years, and I have full faith in our collective ability to meet that moment. And it's with that in mind, in that spirit in mind, that I'd like to make a motion to nominate my friend, Councillor DeBona, to serve as council president. During Noel's time in government on the school committee and the city council, he's always been one to seek compromise and consensus. At a time when our political discourse and at every level has become more negative, I feel it's important for us to have someone like Noel steer us in the right direction. Through his dedication to this job, Noel has a pulse on the feelings of residents in every neighborhood in Ward, and I find that to be incredibly valuable during these times. I'd like to thank Noel for the work he's done and look forward to continuing our work together under his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Andronico. I'd now like to recognize Ward One Councillor Dave McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, thank you. I think we missed a beat. We should have been all standing up, giving you a little applause. We haven't been here for a while. We're rusty.
We're a little rusty, yeah.
A little, you know. To second Councillor Andronico's motion to nominate Councillor DeBona as the president of the city council, it's a privilege. I've known Noel since he got in the business quite some time ago, coming onto the school committee and then moving into the councillor-at-large seat here for a number of terms now. He's all about Quincy. He's real. You see what you get. He's out there all the time. He's out trying to make a point for every group and every cause, and trying to work with the administration as much as he can on different things, but he's all about Quincy. That's one thing that, you know, when I look at all the council members, everyone's in here, and everybody is in here doing their thing about Quincy. But when I look at Noel DeBona, I see especially Quincy, the blue and white, you know. He lives that, and he takes care of the black and red up the other end of the city also. So it's great to be able to second the nomination tonight. I think Noel will do a great job over the next two years, and we'll give him all the help he needs and work closely with the administration to move things forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Are there any other nominations for a city council president for the 2022 to 2023 term? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to close the nominations. With a motion made by Councillor Andronico and seconded by Councillor McCarthy, we have a motion to nominate City Councillor-at-Large Noel DeBona for council president. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, with the unanimous approval, the motion passes. Congratulations, Councillor DeBona. Could you please come up so I can pass you the mic?
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Noel DeBona.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Noel DeBona.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As president of the Quincy City Council.
As the president of the Quincy City Council.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the City of Quincy.
And the ordinances of the City of Quincy.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
Noel DeBona.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, fellow city councillors, Mayor Coke, elected officials, Reverend clergy, distinguished guests. Welcome to the Quincy City Council chambers. Thank you for attending this inauguration ceremony. Tonight is a special moment in time. I can remember eight years ago, when I was the first elected to the Quincy School Committee, and having the inauguration ceremony in the new Central Middle School auditorium. This was January of 2014. We had all local bodies of government there that night. The mayor had just won his last two-year seat. I didn't know what to expect. I'd just turned 39 years old. I was the only rookie elected official in the entire room that night. Little did I know, those two years as a school committee member prepared me for this arena. Tonight is also a flashback of six years ago, January 2016. I had been elected as a Quincy City Councillor-at-Large, and I was getting sworn in right here in this beautiful great hall. I can remember it like it was yesterday. This time, Mayor Coke had just won the first four-year term as a Quincy mayor. Two former elected officials were here in that building that night. They made a long-lasting positive effect on my political career. The first one was former Quincy City Clerk and Norfolk County Commissioner, the late John Gillis. He was sitting right there in the audience, and he would always give me advice about Quincy city politics and making friends with everyone. The second person who made a long-lasting effect in my life was the late Mayor Walter Hannan. Mayor Hannan would always have words of encouragement. He would always say, "Kid, you're doing good. Keep up the good work." Mayor Hannan was sitting back where Mayor Coke is tonight, right back here six years ago. All the mayors were actually sitting back there that night. There was another elected official that made an impact, and he was my former colleague, Joe Finn. I had a privilege of sitting next to Joe during my first two years. It was Joe's last two years of his 16-year career as a councillor. We both just come off a highly contested councillor-at-large race. If anyone saw Joe after the race, he was swimming in his suit. He had lost 40 pounds campaigning that year. We sat in those two seats right there, where Councillor McCarthy is sitting and myself right next to him. The first meeting, he leans over and says, "Do you want to co-sponsor a resolution with me?" Two at-large councillors working together. I learned so much sitting next to Joe, how to prepare for meetings, especially during budget time. Anyone that knows Joe Finn, he is a man of character with a high set of values and moral Did you ever wonder, "How did you get to where you are today?" A lot of it for me was how I was raised. My mother and father instilled in me a hard work ethic and always finding solutions to overcome challenges in life, that I always say, "Son, there will be times in your life when you will get knocked down, but it's about getting up and bouncing back. Don't be afraid to fail or make mistakes, and don't let setbacks get in the way of your goals." I grew up here in the Quincy Point section of the city. If you can remember, Preveady's, Mr. Kelly's, and Sumna Bakery, where it used to be. I attended Daniel Webster Elementary School and both Point and Sterling Middle Schools. Point closed in 1989 for eight years, so I had to go to Sterling for my eighth grade. And I'm a proud Quincy High School graduate, class of 1993. I'll give a shout out to Margaret LaForest. She's also a classmate of mine in the audience tonight. There were many teachers, professors, mentors, friends, coworkers, and coaches that impacted my life in a positive way. I played youth football for the Quincy Point Panthers. I played St. Joseph Church League basketball, Babe Ruth baseball for the Quincy Police and the Morissette Legion baseball. And I had a privilege of playing for legendary coaches like Chuba Myers, Frank Brillo, Ray Catania, and our Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano. Boy, was he an intense coach in basketball. When I made my transition to Quincy High School, I had the pleasure of playing basketball for John Francesini, Ray Papil, and Mike Dracchio. I ran track for John Green, played football for Jack Ramer, Bob Noble, John Tagallari, Bill Shaughnessy, Mark Giadani, and Bob Coother. I played baseball for Bob Silvia, Larry Tagallari, and Mike Dracchio. And I had the honor of being elected by my coaches and my fellow teammates to be a captain of both my football and baseball teams at Quincy High. Each of my coaches had a different style of coaching. Some were disciplinarians, old-school, by the book, but some were very experimental, and they loved to try new plays or schemes. Coaching is like governing or legislating. Sometimes the rules are the rules. Sometimes the old way of doing things don't work anymore. Sometimes you have to amend ordinances or pass new ones. Sometimes you need to revitalize bright properties to allow everything around it to blossom. I grew up in the 80s and 90s in Quincy, and I remember buying toys at Child World, sneakers and sporting goods at Coleman's, and shopping at Woolworth's. I used to love the sidewalk sale in the Quincy Square every summer. Today, take a look at the revitalization of the downtown. We now have the farmer's market back in the middle of the downtown, Kilroy Square with beer gardens and events for citizens to enjoy, complemented with the new General's Park. Take a look through the windows tonight. See the beautiful lights throughout the Hancock Adams Common, stunning historical monuments and statues, water fountains, and a place where people can come to enjoy events, activities with family and friends throughout the year. I share that same vision with Mayor Tom Coke. We're both visionaries. We're in different roles. He is the CEO of the city. He runs the day-to-day operations, the executive body of government, and we are the legislative body. Together, we can work to make Quincy better. We have to maintain a first-class Quincy public school system and continue to take advantage of the funding for our new schools with the MSBA program, like Quincy High School, Central and Southwest Middle Schools, and moving forward with a new Squanam Elementary in the near future. I look forward to working with Public Buildings Commissioner Hines, with school improvements at our other schools, and the completion of the new Richard de Cristofaro Special Education Center, our first-ever in-house facility for our special education students. I look forward to a new public safety headquarters and continue to have a working relationship with Chief Keenan and the Quincy Police Department, Chief Jackson and the Quincy Fire Department, and giving those departments the proper resources so they can keep our citizens safe. This city has so much to offer our citizens, like the Thomas Crane Public Library, our Council on Aging Kennedy Center, and a fantastic recreation program for our kids throughout the year. I see Michelle Hanley back there. Thank you. I look forward and continuing to work with Natural Resources Commissioner Murphy with purifications of parks, new playgrounds, tree removals, and new tree plantings, as well as pond and beach restorations, continuing to work with DPW Commissioner Graciasso for a massive overhaul of infrastructure improvements, of new roads, sidewalks, water mains, sewer replacements, and seawalls. We're very fortunate here in Quincy. We continue to remember and honor our military veterans. We have nice parades and veteran ceremonies. We work with veterans organizations and volunteer to maintain flag islands, and we have great events like Weathrock's America. There are three veterans that I've worked with over the years that have made a huge impact on my political career. American Legion Commander Larry Norton, who just passed away in 2020, Sons of the American Legion Commander Paul Moody, who just passed away on December 28th of just this past week, and also former National Commander Jake Comer. Thank you to those commanders. I've had the pleasure of serving with six of my fellow colleagues for six years. Brian Palmucci is our longest-serving councillor of 12 years, and I've served with him ever since I've been up here. I came on the city council six years ago with Nina Liang, Ian Kane, and Bill Harris. Interesting enough, I served two years with Dave McCarthy and Ann Mahoney on the school committee, and both have been on the city council with me for the last four years. Chuck Phelan has been on for the last two years, this time around as a councillor, and in the 80s and 90s, he served for eight years as a councillor. And Anthony Andronico had served as an appointee for one year before being elected to this council this previous November. Congratulations, by the way. Can I get a round of applause for Anthony? This is the legislative body of government. We oversee the management of the city. We pass and amend ordinances. We bring forth resolutions. We review, cut, and approve annual budgets. We respond to constituent needs and ultimately represent the interests of the residents. The big three committees will be chaired by Chuck Phelan for the Finance Committee. Ordnance will be chaired by Dave McCarthy, and Brian Palmucci will chair the Oversight Committee. We are in our 22nd month of the COVID-19 pandemic and going into the new year with challenges ahead of us. It is affecting our lives and altered the way we live every day. Hopefully, it will make a turn for the better. I want to thank my family, my wife Neve, and the kids for all their support. Thank you to QA TV, Patriot Ledger, the Quincy Sun for the communications for the public. You guys do a great job. Serving as a Quincy City Councillor is a unique role in city government, a special fraternity of six ward councillors and three at-large councillors. Many serve before us. Many will serve after. Many serve before us. Many will serve after us. Let's make a difference and be remembered for many generations after us. In closing, thank you to my fellow city councilors. I appreciate your confidence in me as the next Quincy City Council President. Thank you. Before I take over the helm here, we as our council, the body that's here and a couple at home and the two that actually did the swearing-in earlier today, we'd like to give appreciation for your dedication and service as the city council president. Come on up here real quick, Nina. I'd like to give this to you. This is from all of us.
Thank you. I was happy to be done. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Nomination in elections for the Clerk of Committees. I will now accept nominations for the Clerk of Committees for the 2022-2023 session.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilor Nina Liang, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'd like to nominate Jennifer Manning for our Clerk of Committees. For those who don't know, Jen works in the council office and essentially keeps all of this functioning. She works tirelessly, day in and day out, and I truly believe that we wouldn't be able to do what we do without her. From making sure that we have what we need to conduct meetings, to helping understand the intricacies of this job, to providing support to engage with constituents, and to just being a rock star friend, Jen exemplifies what you'd want of somebody who works in government. Jen, I know you're listening at home. I just want to say that you do the important work that this body does right alongside us every day. You do it consistently with passion, care, and with attention. I've learned so much from you over the years, and I think the city council and the city of Quincy are better off for having you. Thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you do to keep the ship upright. So with that, Mr. President, again, I'd like to nominate Jen Manning for the Clerk of Committees.
A nomination for Council Liang. Do I have a second? Council McCarthy? Go right ahead to the second.
I'd like to second that nomination to Jennifer Manning. And also add, it's Council Liang. What a Jen is proactive, professional. All the councilors do depend on her. We depend on that whole office. It's a well-run office, and Jen's the point person with us on a lot of issues. She's always there. She's got a wonderful personality. She's quick to return calls, and she makes sure we look good in the end, which is a good thing. So it's a great pleasure that I nominate... To second the nomination of Jennifer Manning.
Are there any other nominations for Clerk of Committees for the 22-23 session? Seeing none, I will close the nominations for Clerk of Committees. With the motion made by Council Liang and the seconded by Councilor McCarthy, nominating Jennifer Manning for Clerk of Committees, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is the introduction and adoption of the rules of the city council.
I'd like to motion to accept.
Motion made by Council Liang, seconded by Council McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Authorizing the city clerk to have the city council calendar printed.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Council Liang, seconded by Councilor Andronico. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda?
Authorize the city clerk to have the council rules printed.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Council Liang, seconded by Councilor Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
The adoption of the 2022 city council meeting schedule.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Council Liang, seconded by Council Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, madam?
Next is the benediction from Father Martin.
Okay. Come up here. Father Martin, if you can do our benediction, please.
I invite you to bow your heads and seek God's blessing. Brothers and sisters, let us call to mind the words of our sixth President John Quincy Adams. "The highest glory of the American Revolution was this: It connected in one indissolvable bond the principles of civil government with the principles of Christianity." And he also famously wrote, "Duty is ours. Results are God's." Almighty God, we implore your continued blessings upon us. Help us all to perform our duties well. We give you thanks for the many graces you have bestowed upon this great city and those who serve us so faithfully. They are signs to us of your goodness. Open our hearts to do your will with integrity and a spirit of generosity to serve others. May we always walk in the light of your grace, which is truth, mercy, and love. Protect us from all evil and help us on that journey to eternal happiness and peace. And may you all, oh God, and may you, oh God of all creation, shower your blessings upon us all now and forever. Amen.
Thank you.
Before we conclude this evening, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. I know COVID has really sparked up a lot of folks at home and children as well. We want to wish everybody a happy and healthy and prosperous New Year. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. And with that, if anyone has a motion to adjourn... Motion adjourned by Council Kane, seconded by Council Andronico. This meeting is adjourned.